Yeah, call the Monday's March 3rd, twenty twenty five, Sauterston Borough Council meeting to order and should announce momentarily, but this meeting will be recorded via Zoom. Uh, please uh, drive for a moment of silence. And I thank you, Lord, for all these present, uh, please uh, bless our proceedings this evening. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Secretary, will you please note uh, your attendance for purpose of the recording?
Yes, I'm towards it. It'll be only thing on this valley are both options required.
Okay, great. So noted. Thank you. And council. To one gigantic motion for the consent agenda. Now the motion to.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve February third, twenty twenty five. Wait. I just started. Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes, approve all the bills, February third, twenty twenty five, February eighteen, twenty twenty five, February twenty twenty five, or March twenty twenty five.
Well, second. Yeah, motion by Calphorus, Munden and Danana for approval of Paul minutes and bills as noted in the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of those. Okay, that's so moved and we'll go right to presentations for this evening. Hi, Jessica.
Hello. Good evening. Okay, so February was a good month. Um, we officially have all for third Friday at all our vans, all our food trucks, all booked. In fact, we have all our van for our gym also booked. Um, so we're moving along there. Um, I'm happy to announce that we got a very generous sponsorship donation from the New Bright Path Child Care Center. Um, the wonderful staff there and that with them out there ribbon cutting and we've been talking to them. So they gave a really nice um, pit zone sponsorship. So we're going to be able to not only continue to support that area, but bring in some more activities and games for the kids down there. So I'm really excited about that and that new collaboration with them. Um, we hosted uh, ribbon cutting on February eleventh at the Broad Street Italian Cuisine and Pizza, just celebrating the new owners. I think I mentioned that last week, but uh, we had that and then we stayed for lunch and it was delicious and nice to hang out with the new owners, uh, Roselle and Giovanni. Uh, first business bites event was last Monday. We hosted that at Brass Collar and we had two people from Q and B back come out and teach us about cyber fraud, banking safety, everything for the businesses. We had a nice turnout. Um, it was really interesting to hear what they had to say, especially now our AI era. Um, and we also learned that you should always write a check with a gel pen because they cannot wash gel being checked. So, yeah. That's one tidbit we all learned that I, yes, very interesting. Um, we have coming up, not Sauterston Connects actually um, sponsored, but the first annual St. Patrick's Day Bar crawl is coming up. Um, the, we are helping them advertise it. And then, of course, it has all the businesses in town, Branch Creek Cinema Brewing, Northbound, Brass Collar, and Broad Street uh, Italian Cuisine and Pizza. That's going to be Saturday the fifteenth, so next Saturday from two until eight. So late good weather and it'll be a nice event to walk in between those establishments and then stay and have a meal.
And hopefully not cold.
And not probably, correct. I'm hoping early that's better, I promise. Um. We are excited. We have received three more applications in the last month for our facade grant program. That brings it to a total four that we have received. We've already approved one, um, which I mentioned last month for I, uh, Curious Atelier. But we will be, our selection committee will be reviewing the next three and hopefully next month I'll have answers on who we've given those to. We're hoping to give them to all four of the rest of you through it. Um. We are at the time of year, March now for assessments. Long process last year, but I think that we have a new system implemented, which we, you know, went into last year and we collected a lot more than previous years. So they go out actually this month and so I'll be working with our bookkeeper to get all of that out. And we also, at our last meeting, we have a committee now that's set up to start working on all of these Sauterston Connects reauthorization as this is our year to do that, uh, twenty twenty five. So we are getting that, all of that information together. Our bookkeeper knows all the paperwork and we're going through audit and everything. So we'll be going through that and starting that process this March.
This March?
Yeah.
But the bid is good until
Yes.
the end of this year?
But we have a lot to collect and present and then advertise that certainly points about that. So we've already got that committee set up, uh, last month we did, so we're starting it.
Yeah. No questions?
How many people, uh, how many business owners came to the presentation?
To the bid business last week? We had, I would say, we had a good twelve and then we had some, no, I'm sorry, because we have some uh, board members who are also in the center. So we had about sixteen. Yeah, which was nice. And some of them brought family out, so they can take that information back, I guess, to their own. So we hope to increase it as the weather gets warmer. Um, it was, it was at Brass Collar.
Oh, at Brass Collar.
But inside their new um, tented area. So we're hoping it was springtime, you can get some more notes outside.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Price, I'm the library representative and today.
Can you do me a favor?
Like, so, can you hear me better? Okay, Penny Price, um, the Sauterston's uh, library representative and of course also a resident. So from both those perspectives, I'd just like to say thank you for the newsletter. Um, so the library's represented in this. We were really happy to be able to have this venue to present and talk about the library, but also as a resident, it was great to receive this. It's a really um, enjoyable, fun read and full of information. So um, thank you for the new newsletter. Any questions for me? Either as a resident or library representative? Alright, thanks.
And we'll move over to administrative reports. The mayor.
The only thing I'll put on people greater respect, but next month, but put on your calendars now, we're gonna do another Earth Day cleanup, um, which, Earth Day is April twenty second, so it'll be April twenty fifth, I believe. And Calphorus, you have something else for that, so uh, I've totally outlined my target spot now. So just put it on your calendar if you can, for Saturday, April twenty fifth. Uh, and that's all for now.
Mayor Chief? Good evening, sir and counsel. Uh, please turn in copies of my report on your desk. The public, I'll just go over briefly. We averaged twenty six incidents per day, could, or it was busy month for us, which clips up seven percent above the overall time last year. Under eighty nine traffic stops, eight four tickets issued, thirty written warnings for repairs where she, well, I had three vehicle crashes. Uh, I attribute a lot of that to public works for things to compare the road to defend for that and everybody be careful. Uh, we assisted other agencies fifty three times and a hundred and fourteen public service calls, uh, and three hundred and eighty miscellaneous calls. Um, we are up to eight arrests this year, which is slightly more than last year. Uh, our major crimes are, are were two ahead of last year at this point, uh, and our minors are, uh, rather significant, which includes, um, throw in mischief, things that sort of, some small stuff. Um, so some notes of interest, we were able to obtain twenty seven hundred dollars for training equipment, teasers, uh, teaser cartridge for ulcers from another police department. That covers our training cost, and next year, so that's all covered. Uh, we finally got the last of the equipment that we all, that we've, uh, already ordered off of twenty twenty three, we see even grant that Representative Malagary got us. So now all that equipment is in, the officers are being trained and placing the vehicles once training is done. Um, and one incident during Super Bowl, a town near Riverdale, we're very grateful for that. Um, we've got a quarter, about one hundred percent of our annual trainings already been completed for this year, so we're getting ahead of that. And that's about all I have. Any questions, sir?
Question thirteen.
Sir, public work, still working wise for Ohio National Works, I mean, for sure. I do have the numbers calculated, fell off the quick, a few things, so uh, the snow continued through February. We were out, uh, at five events in February and and total six inches of snow in February, which led us to, uh, eleven events. And fifteen, fifteen and a half inches of snow this year. Uh, the three big numbers that came up were little season of work session, but uh, that area was the big number. We had a hundred and twenty some hours down, working on Watchfall Street. Uh, Sunday before Labor, our President's Day, we had a sewer main clock on that much fall street. We were able to get it, we have a contract, the emergency authority, they were able to come out, get it open. And we want TV, they couldn't get TV back up, but it was still flowing. And a lot of roots and breeze. So we did get, uh, he replaced about thirty one pieces of the main. We're bringing in the chief, emergency authority back tomorrow. I see there's any more funding issues, ready to come out, but now we got all that stuff out and you know that up. We want to see if there's any other issues we'd be worried about that in the future. At work session, I think I had an idea why this is backing up. Did that, so let me place it back up on the, uh, long ago I've been here, I think we did that, we, that maybe ten time already. That's always down, I admit. But our, our home station called Cherry Lane, when it put the big up, the ironing of, uh, come, of course, maybe then that comes down that intersection and goes straight into the main and will make so much turbulence, it backs up. Rabbit line is trying to get into that. So we'll have to maybe come up with something to do, to cook that work session, just to get that turbulence out of it. And uh, the other, over time, with the high, high number was simply still, of course, and then uh, over time, well, no work in that sewer part.
About it. Are your cameras broken or was that your tele, you mean your tele tablet?
Oh, no, ours is only for like sewer ladders.
For the ladder?
We have to get a robot one, which is sort of, it opens like twenty, twenty something gallons. So a little bit that we use, we bring that, that when, like, emergency authority had a trail of a little bit, a long trail of a little come and also a TV truck to strike, slide down. Those are there far. Who has more need, it's one with others.
And that's on the Midland side or the Broad?
Yeah, it, it was right at the main hall at Midland, Broad, work, the, on the Broad Street, on the Midland side, they yell on, really, like, mighty ones, so.
Okay, that's it. Question, appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Doc, of course.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Uh, I, I did submit my report as counsel. Uh, I'd just like to point out three things. Uh, number one, one, my report is a minor subdivision, a lot line change, uh, property located, I think, add to in seventy South Fifth Street. Uh, that matter is on the planning commission agenda for, uh, this week. So, uh, counsel, we do see that probably uh, sometime in April, they, uh, then what the, uh, planning commission recommend, recommendation is. Um, the other item is, uh, number three, which is on, uh, the agenda for, uh, this evening. Thursday, minor subdivision, a lot line change, that, like, the consideration, or, uh, this is portion of the agenda is, uh, get that. Uh, the last item is item nine is the employee handbook, for having drafts of, uh, policies, uh, for, uh, progressive discipline for employees, uh, and the draft in practice in child birth leave and also social media and electronic policy drafted by, uh, K. Weir, the mayor of the city, along with Sarah, one, uh, providing this more updated policies for the, uh, any questions with respect to that?
So we're gonna have a hearing for later for the wannabe item, is the Thursday subdivision. Yeah, I agree. It's item seven. Thanks, uh, that's the completion there, I'm good.
Um, so number one, today we launched our new accounting software. So that behind telling from status data systems in the August day, cell fees are, I mean, it's live on everyone's computer. We're basically off of the Freedom System. We're still working on implementing the E P payment and all of that. That will go live when we bill next. Um, they'll go out inside one big package. We are working on getting, um, the credit cards onboarded to that. So we're using, but for right now, we're still using, you know, for pay, so we can get that going. But it seems to be rather seamless, uh, not anything picked up. So everyone seems to be happy with it. So we've been talking about it since, I think, I started, so literally almost a year, uh, but we're there. Um, they'll be back out tomorrow. They'll work with us kind of in and in, probably all kind of a job. And then, um, we'll kind of be on our own until we do our billing and then they'll come back out with our first bill. Um, our park reservation launched online, um, so you're able to rent the pavilion and everything using our rent best platform and that's, it's been really well. People are utilizing it. Um, we have a ton of reservations. Um, people are calling in and getting their needs booked to happen for the last few months. So, um, our parking lot use, um, and now they're able to do it all by themselves, right on reference, free. Um, pool memberships open on Saturday, thanks to my ladies, um, primarily for Tina's office, um, getting all the forms put together and all the marketing stuff out. Um, we've done ten thousand dollars in pool membership sales, but it will be on Saturday. So they're selling well, uh, um, that is Christine's baby and she has taken the lead on that. To be quite honest, I forgot that day was not pretty. She told me on Sunday. So, uh, we have people work that will print a lot with the ten percent discount, running the ten percent discount rate through the month of March and then it'll go to the regular regular March, uh, April first.
No, March thirty first.
March thirty first. Food service.
From the first of thirtieth is early bird, race, the thirty first of Monday.
Correct, so average food for that day. Uh, we also have new, uh, discount programs for first responders, for swim team, uh, for our employees who are trying on a couple different things. Um, who are excited about that. So, uh, we have started hiring, the hiring advertising went out, we're starting to introduce next week for our state health positions as well. Uh, last week, Chief Sarkisian and I were all at the Pelras Conference in Hershey, Fraco Labor Relations. Uh, so beautiful labor, um, not always the most exciting content, but good information to have. Um, we all got a lot out of it. Uh, they have some clean stuff that our chief and sort of we were able to go to and then the union stuff and just general labor, um, constitution and discipline and not. So it was a really good conference. It's always the well-attended. Good information. Uh, I met today with Ian Hoyer with Rotary, um, who are beginning to wrap up the park project. So their intention is to have a, a big reneaming event in the fall, September. Um, my goal is for our project to be wrapped up in April or May, prior to the start of prior to start of puppet Sunday and a lot of our reservations. So, um, I met, Steve met with, uh, Tom. How, did it all?
Tom, Tom.
Tom Brothers.
Jay Trump.
Um, they're going to be pouring the cement for the sculpture garden. So that's being done. They build out the path of over going to heat. Um, we're kind of just buttoning up some of the final details, um, and we're making progress. So we're in the most strength, we're in the best. Um, in the most important business is we got a new copier, it's not finished. We're actually saving money with the new copier. Uh, I did a break it today and it's, with all the papers on your desk, it's working great. Um, last week we hosted the Montgomery County Borough Federation Dinner with, uh, Hatfield Borough, Pelford Borough, uh, we were able to host that at Generation, um, and that was really beautifully done. My office staff carried the lead on that because I was out of town and they did a beautiful dog and we received compliments from the other borough manager, uh, who's well accepted. So kudos to them. Uh, it was a beautiful event. I saw a lot of really great pictures, um, and Saturday got the hoop, which was really awesome, um, and generations did a, a really incredible dog with food and the event and they allowed us to go sit there, you know, pop to us, so. Um, the last thing I want to touch on is the mowing bid result. So they went out on Friday and it is an item for business, but I wanted during my report, if there were any questions I could just do, like, a brief overview and ask some questions.
Would you like to do that now?
Okay.
Certainly.
So last year, for the first time, uh, we put out a mowing program bid option with our engine. And so that was to help kind of left in the burden on our other work staff. When we did the math, we actually were going to save a little bit of money when we did the kind of briefing on what we paid. It usually was a full-time employee and a part-time employee, four yards a week for the full-time and thirty hours for our part-time employees. Um, so when you did the math, we ended up saving a little bit of money by putting out the bid. It went really well last season. We were able to get a little bit more work done or projects done because we had the extra staff. Uh, so we decided to put it out again last year, which is a one-year contract. We put it out this year for a two-year contract with an optional per year. Uh, so it looks a little bit different and that's why I wanted to go over it and I was confused until I saw it just with Gilmore on Thursday about thirty days. So we put it out for, it's twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six for fifty sixty. So last year we put it out for just twenty eight weeks. And that's why the numbers look a lot too great. So it's the numbers that are in front of you, uh, so the base bid came back at one twenty-three, two hundred. Um, that's for two years, for the both years. And then we did an alternate bid, which added some other locations that we were still mowing last year. That then, again, if we awarded the alternate, would allow our shop to go do other projects. Uh, with the transition of Steve retiring over the summer, we're going to retire someone this summer, where we have a transition leadership. We thought maybe it was beneficial to also have those properties included. Um, so the alternate bid for both years came back at twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. So all in all, for two years of mowing is a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. That paid out, I think typically monthly we get billed for those loans. If the loan does not occur because it's dry or otherwise, you'll see that. So that's a price not to exceed. It's not necessarily what we're going to be paying. And then the third year came back for the base and the alternate at seventy thousand, two hundred and two dollars, twenty-two bucks. The total for all three years, all alternatives included, was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, which we spent a per year average seventy-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, twenty-nine cents. Last year, I think we were around one sixty-five.
Sixty-five or something like that.
Around sixty-five. So when you look at just the bid per year, it ended up seeing a little bit less than what we see last year and then giving us a little bit of wiggle room to do all. So our budget for twenty twenty-five included seventy thousand dollars for mowing, um, anticipating how it would go up a little bit. I think that it worked, kind of that six thousand dollar gap that we need to find out from the budget to get these extra properties included in our mowing program, knowing that there's an opportunity that might not flow ever in the current period. I think this year we have this new bid.
That's like which, how's really good to see.
That was bidding, that clearly needed their full bid for. Uh, the company in a little bit earlier this year, with all the permits keeping out of Farleyville. Last year, we had bid, manning property, they were not, they were the third bloods. So that's the spiel. If there's any questions or point of clarity, if you have any, they were confusing to me when I opened the bidding book. I was like, this is way more than last year. What happened? Um, and then when Jeff wrote me down, we need a lot more time.
Yeah, if you don't mind, counsel, if you have any, uh, need for clarifications, we'll have stuff now and then, no one gets that, I can be, uh, yeah, I have one, too. The twenty twenty-four was that, I, wasn't that a three-year contract? No, that, that one, one year, one year and how much? Sixty, sixty some thousand?
Sixty some.
Yeah, that's okay.
But it was around six, I'd say fifty to fifty-five.
Got it. So the, the alternative is for the, toward the addition, that one is somewhere in the magnitude.
Fourteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, okay. Um, that's right. And you, and you're recommending the three years, like seven, whatever the math says, seventy-five, seventy-five and seventy-six, approximately. Okay, alright. Any other questions, counsel?
What, what percentage of our properties are we still mowing on our, that?
We just, we care.
Just would take care of all.
We watch.
Will we get to a point where we could eliminate, have, have equipment, sell that? We would probably be one though, ready to fit. There would be, it's a good problem, if we, uh, share with the. You, I, I mean, year one, you guys feel really good about it, built, you know?
Yeah, there's really a lot of changes coming up through the next three years, so maybe.
Do.
Easy to work through that, too, with all those, with, or.
All those come down and grab it.
Yeah.
They're all long to a bar.
But that, we were talking back and forth about that, it wouldn't be better to go to the three, so we can get a whole new state, I think, and then maybe some four year. Okay, I think that's worth it.
Yeah. So to extend things with that, for all our properties, you do have the commentary. So.
So the base bid includes Lawn Avenue, West Street, Holly Hill, Chestnut and Wildly Ground, Community Pool, community park, uh, Boys and Girls Club, Summit Street Sanctuary, Two Word Easement, Main Street Block, Main Street Parking Lot, Borough Hall, Railroad Avenue, Summit Street, Hillside Cemetery and the Train Station. And then the alternate added the French Street Ball Field. Uh, there's the West Street Park, actual like creek area, since we were setting coming in to do that, the Shoal Property, the Main Street Club, the Generation, Public Works and two fifty North Street. So that would be here everywhere that we're currently mowing, which means I have a four yard old employee that is going to be more than just sit on a flower, which is the benefit. And then we have the part-time employee that we have been sharing with the sewer plant that we could maybe get some more skilled work out of. And then in addition to that, having a unit now with Brooklyn.
Uh, career first.
Career first prison, um, where they have worker bees and that are going to be coming out, doing landscaping and other, some farm partners, some under supervision, they're like a special group of inmates that have very special privileges, but they have a supervisor that comes out with them and they'll actually do some additional land TV projects. We were spending a lot of money out for the landscaping and we're trying to bring that in a little bit, um, by giving meat leads to help and then also freeing up some of, of this work as well.
My only other question is about the bidder, Mid-Atlantic property venture with like a, like a size that's, uh, at all for landscaping. Global.
Combined with the theme requirement, but Mid-Atlantic, as they have it gone, they have all of that. Jeff has looked at it, uh, looked their friend, they looked at their documents as well. They are, they need all the public. Okay.
They were the lowest responsible bidder at all.
Is there? Alright, well, thank you for the excellent update, uh, across the board and thank you, I know you apologize for payments along with the financial, you know, the financial system, but from our perspective, that's pretty much light speed. And.
Like when, what's the switch that, like, we were able to operate in today, you really did in time? And operationally, some of the retirement processing, we're still processing credit cards, it's just not on the main system yet. Um, we are with a really green company and are supporting a bit of that school. So I'm, I'm really happy with where we're at with that.
Yeah, the other comment, you mentioned, you know, being away and things still getting done. Same way with you, Steve, I know you were out during a couple of the, the, the snowstorms and stuff, so. You know, I've always learned that a good indicator of leadership is, you know, a lot of people think the leader has to always be physically present, but when you train and develop, uh, their staff, which you guys all, all, all the department heads, that pays off and an indication is that the work continues to go on as well as if you were here. So kudos to you guys, because that's that's my high-level perspective. And things went great in the past couple of weeks despite you guys' absence. Uh, thanks for that. The mention about pavilion is is being booked up. How how's the kitchen? Is that ready to go? Has people been?
So as an add-on option with our rentals, so people can add it on. They don't necessarily have to book it. Like when they're booking the pavilion, we find a lot of people will think about it and then they're booking it to close month or year. But people are easy to be like, hey.
Yeah, good. I heard a couple last year that did you, that they were really happy with the the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Thanks, Dan.
I booked the the pavilion on breakfast. It was super easy. Um, the big red Martian man is going to have the. Last event that's up on March thir- May thirtieth, so in May. And um, it was super easy. I was like so excited. And if you're a resident, you don't even have to put a deposit down. So that would be the moment.
I see what you did there. Thank you, Tara. Uh, let's move on to the video report. Alright, during that, we will go to public comments. So officially open up the comment of a public comment section. If you were a borough resident or property and or business owner. Uh, but you can come up to the podium, state your name and address, and we go to hear from you.
I live on Second Street in Satterton. I have West Street Auto Service. My dilemma is my wife can hardly walk. I'd like to submit if we could put a handicap sticker across from our house, not a sticker, but a sign for her to park there. I've got a problem with Seaford on the alley. He doesn't want us to park out back of my garage. So I had to put railings up so she can wander down and I just wonder if we could get a handicap sign up so she could. Cause everybody, everybody in the street wants to steal it.
Going to say thank you for coming forward, Mr. You have a formal process now and you can submit a simple application. Chief, he'll he'll go out and investigate.
I was told I had to be here. Cause I I checked it out. Those sides and the secretary of the police told me I had to come here. So, I just wondering it, I don't know. I don't know exactly the, I figured I was going to get paperwork to do all this.
Chief will help you out with that.
I don't really know you. You're sure somebody knew. I knew all the other ones. Alright, I appreciate your time though. We will keep in touch. Hopefully we can do something. I won't have a problem, but everybody, everybody on Second Street wants to park with my wife always did. And Seifer don't like his parking out back of the garage, because that's Seifer's alley. That's what I call, that's what I call it. Okay, alright, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
They already had your comment.
Uh, Dan Hauser, four, three, six, Central Avenue. Uh, I'm here to talk to the chief. Um, last week, and I'm pretty sure it was, uh, my neighbor came over to my house. Uh, Ms. Connery, and I'm pretty sure it was Officer, um, Troop. At one o'clock in the morning knocks on her door and says you're, and you have to understand how the the um. Her driveway is, her car was sitting down low, so it's not like it's on the street. He noticed that her light, interior light was on, knocked on her door. And said, listen, would you like the uh to uh turn your light off? Um, you know, you we don't want your your battery to be dead. Uh, she was very graceful and uh she said she would do it. Officer Troop went back into his vehicle that was on the uh the street and then didn't move, realized that she was a single. Um, woman, didn't have anyone but a dog, stayed there with the lights on, li- lit up the yard. She turned everything off and then waited for her to get back into her house and then waited a couple more seconds and then drove off. And she is so grateful that someone would take the time to do something like that. And she asked me if I knew who, and she gave me the description, and I'm pretty sure that's who it was, the the conversation and how he looked and so on and so forth. That being said, she's retired uh teacher and she soon will be leaving our area to go to Boston area. To spend time with her family and help raise the grandkids, so on and so forth. And her statement was that this is one of the reasons why she doesn't know she wants to leave. Because of a small town with people that are caring about someone like her. And just is like she doesn't know if she could go to another place and have that kind of feeling. And so I was thinking about that. That's one of the reasons why I came here today. Um, I know that you don't do top-down management. I know that, well, I feel that you don't do it and I feel that you are bottom up. But that also leads from the top, because every time I've seen you and your department, when you're out, you're always complimenting people, you're always around. And I just want to say thank you and people do notice it. And I know that all your officers, one way or another, affects our town with little things like that. I don't know if you hear that enough, but I just wanted to say that. So thank you on behalf of her. While I'm up here, thinking, I I was also had a conversation with a friend of mine last week and it was on the phone and wasn't texting. We actually had a conversation and it we, it got into the borough, uh, living in Satterton and Borough Council and so on and so forth. And it reminded me what you guys do. I I had a, for a minute, I understand. I was up on the desk for a minute and I I know what the sacrifices you guys make. And the reason you're doing it, it's not politics, it's not Republican, it's not Democrat. It's the the reason you love this town at this level. And I just want to say thank you guys for what you do. Um, a lot of behind-the-scenes work and you all work together. You, uh, I know that there's a lot of discussions that you have to do and get over with, but the whole object of doing what you guys do. Is because you really love this town, make it a better place for all of us to live. And please you guys too over there. Alright, all my warm and fuzzies are done. Thank you for everything.
I have to admit on the first one, I would have a light example. Thanks, Dan. Uh, anyone else? Alright, during that, I'll close the public comment section and shall move forward to the business of. First up will be the Cherry Lane. Think that one's already. Uh, nobody introduced that. Yeah, we're doing Cherry Lane. Oh, okay. I was thinking it was, uh. Got it, got it, got it. And. Uh, would you like to introduce it formally? You'll be, there is a motion required, uh, by counsel. Hearing on the proposed subdivision for four fifty-one Cherry Lane. That's why I got confused. Alright, I have a motion to open the hearing.
Can you prepare to make a motion to open the hearing on the proposed subdivision of four fifty-one Cherry Lane?
Oh, second. Yeah, motion by Counselor Paul. I'm glad to open the hearing for the proposed subdivision of four fifty-one Cherry Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
So, uh, the forty this evening, uh, for consideration is resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash zero five. This is really Durstine, uh, minor subdivision, lot line change for the real estate located at four thirty-five and four fifty-one Cherry Lane.
That's correct.
Um, Tyler Freed is here this evening, uh, from Miss Engineering, representing applicant. Uh, this was reviewed by the Plan Commission at its February fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. They did, uh, recommend, um, approval of the, uh, minor subdivision, lot line change. Uh, subject to, um, about seventeen conditions, which is, which are embedded in the, uh, resolution forty. I did share them with Mr. Freed. Uh, in my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, is that all seventeen conditions that the resolution.
That is correct.
So with that, um, background, uh.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Durstine owns approximately thirty-four thousand square feet of land located at the intersection of, uh, South Fish Street and Cherry Lane. Uh, he came to us looking to do a minor subdivision. When we did the survey, we identified that there were several encroachments. Uh, on the one neighbor's, uh, property, which would consist of a fence and a retaining wall. So in, uh, the good faith of Mr. Durstine, he went to the neighbor and said, hey, we're already doing this plan. Would you like to do a lot line adjustment to correct the the encroachment? So that's why we also have a lot line adjustment. Uh, Ms. Hutnick, uh, will have to sign the plan and, uh, we're, I can actually point it out here.
This line here is shifting to the, uh, northeast to accomplish this, that's the retaining wall out of the street. So, um.
That's, that's the reason for the lot line adjustment, um. Uh, the 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 grade there changes pretty significantly and they put the retaining wall in for the driveway. Yeah, it's it's all all the features on this plan are existing, other than the the lot lines that are proposed. Yeah. Um, so, uh, Ms. Hutnick's getting approximately a thousand square feet. And then the two lots that are proposed, one will be approximately sixteen thousand square feet and the other one twelve. So as your solicitor, uh, mentioned, there's the resolution before you. Um, the only thing I'll note on the resolution, and I had made this comment to, um, Mr. Terente, is that. Uh, this, the areas noted in here would be considered gross areas and they go out to the the center line or, uh, into the road. Um, I spoke with your engineer and he said that, um, you guys are going to take ownership of the right-of-way. So those areas will be decreased to subtract out the road right-of-way. Um, so that's, when you see the final plan versus the areas listed in this resolution, there will be a slight difference. And we're talking, uh, like a thousand, two thousand square feet. Um, all these lots still comply with the, uh, minimum lot size.
Although it's probably not going to take dedication.
Okay.
But I reply to you.
Okay.
So I look at the ordinances, any orders?
Okay.
It's going to be measured to the ultimate, right of way.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Change anything with respect to the resolution.
That's fine, then disregard the comment I made about the areas.
Yes, you're, you have two lots, there's coming to an end at the end of the day, right?
Yes.
Tell, uh, counsel how large the lots are going to be when you decide.
Yeah, so then the net areas will be, uh, lot one, which is the one at the intersection, that'll be sixteen thousand square feet. And lot two will be twelve thousand square feet approximately. And the minimum lot size is, uh, ten thousand for reference.
And you're not, there's going to be no creation of non-ventilations with respect to the subdivision.
That is correct.
Um, are they, uh, but they're still right-of-way. So is it a private right-of-way then? Or, uh?
Yeah, I'll ask, yeah, can I, are you guys going to take easement on the right-of-way then?
That's my understanding. You can approve the resolution, so.
Yeah, it just changes, yeah, how we show the lot areas and the, uh, right-of-way on the plan. But in regards to the overall proposal, the the, uh, lot configuration does not change. True.
But but the right of, the easement that he would. They're on the the streets, both Fifth Street and Cherry Lane. And it's for the street. We don't typically dedicate right-of-way. So all the thorough streets are named, so they were created by. Right. So basically, we're having these over the remaining streets. So it's kind of duplicate bid work and we don't. Yeah, understood. And and these properties aren't such that they're need to be in private easements at all. It because it's on the public, on the public.
On the public.
Okay, thank, thank that.
I have a doubt, but. Which probably does not have an answer, so. But do we know when the wall was filled by that neighbor that is all along, that's not in a correct lot line?
It was the previous owner that was the pass up.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, uh, I'm just fascinated to know that that was. Now, it's in actually dorks, you're paid to do this and you have a wall on your property that should have been terminated. And, uh, maybe it wasn't, well, maybe it's a hundred years old, maybe it was stored.
It's, it was put up since I owned my property. And I was informed that on ver check. It happened. It's stuff that impacted me greatly and a good neighbor and. It could have made a repair of fence down again on the wall and that would have gone through a lot.
Well, thank you for being a good neighbor. I think they helped you a lot with the way it's up there, but that needs to go, but. I'm excited to see what you're going to do with the property. It's a cool about time.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Out, but. Gotta be one of the oldest houses in the.
He's lived eighteen hundred at his last, the main part, the other part.
This is where the common spot is there. Yeah, I'm sure he doesn't want that to be, it's the same that you're telling for.
Yeah, I guess for many.
No, I think, I was thinking about. Anything else?
No, I've.
I don't think there's sewer, dietary sewer, part of that area. The the home station is right there.
Oh, you mean that the ending of the property? Oh, you mean a lateral coming into the. Oh, there's no main cup going down Cherry Lane?
Like that, between Fifth Street and that home station. Uh, that home station takes the two houses.
I totally got it going the other direction.
Oh, I have, yeah, that whole problem that pulls out to a fit and pump out for a fish except.
Yeah, there's no proposed building series. So, uh, you know, the a house is an existing house, um, and the the, uh, new lot. Um, Mr. Durstine will eventually sell that lot, but we are not showing any proposed house there. So the, you know, if if the sewer does not go across the frontage there, they would be responsible for, uh, installing a lift pump or grinder station. Whatever was necessary to access that, um, public sewer.
Um, is the middle lot a smaller, so it's a three, that's ten thousand.
Right, twelve thousand.
Any other questions?
It is. It's an existing feature. It's got to be on the survey plan.
I don't have any. Okay, then, uh, there we meet the short mission.
I mean, can you come in for the site development or land development for me? Oh, you can fly with that.
The land development is one of the seventeen conditions. Hey, did anything, was anything discussed tonight that would change our perspective on? Okay, but, uh, John, that doesn't need an amendment for, that would have to be done anyway if there is no.
Correct.
No, no sewer hookup, but okay, go on, Steve. Alright then, uh, please have a motion for approval of the resolution.
This permanent motion for revolution twenty. This is permanent, I must have approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five for the subdivision of four fifty-one Cherry Lane, subject to verification of right-of-way.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you. First, I have motion by Counselor Paul and Shali for, uh, approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, the subdivisions, uh, eight, four thirty-five and four fifty-one Cherry Lane. What was your wording? That was mine.
Subject to the.
Verification, huh?
Subject to verification of the easement or right-of-way. Okay, great. Uh, are there any other comments or questions for the engineer?
And on, all, all in favor of approval of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, thank you, gentlemen, that passed.
Thank you.
Our next one is, uh, another handicap parking request, so this is how your process will work in another two to four weeks. You know, favorably, the chief's recommendation will group, so we have one for, I wrote it all over, I think it's five eleven East Broad Street. Uh, and we discussed that in, in work session, uh, previously, so may I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five oh six, adding the handicap parking spot at five eleven East Broad Street.
I'll have a second.
I will second.
So, Mr. Richter, correct?
Yes.
Well, thank you, sir. I have motion by Counselor Shali and Victor for approval of resolution forty twenty-five dash oh six to add a handicap parking spot at, uh, five eleven East Broad Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that, that's a pass, I'm sure. And are we actually ready for a hearing on the next one? Oh, let's see. And has the next one offered on, to the planning commission?
No, according to, uh, non-neiform, I guess. Were you voting advertising master prior?
Oh, no, 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 on, on my list, I have another, it, it's twenty forty-five, I think thirteen oh one, I think that. Or Larry, so. I learned that I wrote, there's, there's things next to that. May I have a motion to help, but that, that here, please.
Mr. President, make a motion to open the hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five eight one three zero one.
Well, I have cut this. Alright. Thank you. I have motion by Counselor Shali and by President Huber to open the hearing on ordinance twenty thirty-five eight thirteen oh one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for bearing with me, Mr. Trandler.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'd open up the hearing for, um, uh, the boarding exchange for pension ordinance, uh, boarding summer twenty twenty-five dash eight one three dash zero one. I have premarked identification to exhibit, P one is the proof of advertising, P two is the proof of a filing of the proposed ordinance at the, uh, Montgomery County Law Library. Um, as Sarah mentioned earlier, this was a, uh, the first reading of this ordinance time long ago. Um, so now it is, it's the hearing and consideration of council for the adoption of that ordinance. Um, by way of background, the, the borough does have a pension ordinance, there's four changes that are going to happen. Uh, if the board or council adopts this, uh, ordinance, it has to do with investing. Uh, that's the first, uh, change, investing for the current board use. Um, there was a, I guess, a little nuance in the pension ordinance where anyone hired in for two thousand sixteen, um, they wouldn't invest until twenty-five years with the borough. Um, all other ones do easy, it was ten years, so it's kind of maybe not consistent across the board. Um, the foster living increase is the next change, the new employees hired after March one of twenty twenty-five. Um, the COLA increase would be permissive and not mandatory for anyone that's employed at the borough prior to that date, uh, that it is, uh, you know, in Florida. Um, there is a change in disability benefit with respect to, um, the pension. Um, any of you employees that would be available after, yeah, March first, twenty twenty-five. And the fourth change is, um, the normal retirement benefit, anyone that's currently, um, employed, uh, by the borough, um, and this is again, I'm sorry, I should have said this, time new of one retirement, time of least pension. Uh, all these changes. Um, it's seventy percent current, okay, and it's your highest, uh, thirty-six months. Uh, the change would be, again, March first, twenty twenty-five, it'll be, again, three years, um, your highest salary, but it's fifty percent, so there's to be raised that.
I will just note that there's that need, percent, like, it does seem like it's the line, seventy percent according to G R is one of the highest that exists in their, um, for fifty percent of standard in beautiful pension for non-respect. Uh, so it does seem like kind of a big, but it, it's more in line with standard pension offered for non-respect, please.
And, and all these, uh, changes have been vetted by, uh, the actuary for the borough, um, and they are, you know, all more with, with these chan, with these changes of Sarah, uh, method. Um, so that's the background of the changes, and then, uh, like, at this point, I'll open it up to, I want for any questions? Want to add any comment? It's a easy hearing.
Like the comment, I would like to put a podium, I can just say your name for the record.
Hearing none, council, any questions?
Um, did we receive little comments for the public gathering period, um, topic? Um, and then, perhaps, I think it's important, uh, John, John, clearly, this does not affect any existing employee. So that's the, that was an important counsel consideration. Um, uh, the hypothetical, I have hypothetical question, I get the question for a hypothetical, there is how does permitted COLA adjustment, how, how would that word change? Cause I think you said, it's not, it's not required, but it would be permissible for some of that.
How would, how would be optioned?
We would.
They were here, like, for a COLA adjustment, and also under the rule of this.
Is that, like, generic to adopt a petition, or hers?
It would be per the non-uniform plan, so anyone hired before March first, it would be an automatic.
Right.
Um, anyone hired after, you should make a request for that COLA adjustment. If you're looking at, say, within three years, five, often times that request is made, so you're looking like, um, twenty-five years down the road.
Oh, really?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, of, of course, well, well, ten years. I think that's been ten.
But they would have to be under required, at that point, they would be not required.
Some of us will not be here, everyone.
Probably will.
Okay, any other questions, Senator? Alright then, uh, oh, you know what, we're getting closer here.
You, you can, you can do it, Anthony. Yeah, um, let's, uh, approve, let me approve for each, better watch. Time for the seventy, eight.
Many, I have any question for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight one three dash zero one, and any versions of non-uniform.
Time for upgrade on reading back.
I'm sticking out.
I have motion by Counselor Paul Rogers for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five eight thirteen oh one, to amend the provision. I have discussed it, we then, for that, and evidence, the housing form, that's the plan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. That's one, I think. E as in Delston. Sarah already keyed this one up, so I have motion for the approval.
On amended to the loan, the master, the.
Oh, really?
So, we, the way the bids came in, it had an alternate, it had an alternate for twenty-five and twenty-six, an alternate for twenty-seven, and then an option for a third year, so. Uh, the way the motion, if the board, or council is inclined, it should say motion to award the twenty twenty-five mowing program bid to
Alder.
Alderford Manscaped LLC, I apologize, for a three-year contract, and you now have to receive two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents, which includes the option for year three and alternates toward twenty-five, twenty-six, and the option year twenty twenty-seven.
For one, they call it that.
This is an option.
Let's see, so. So, so moved.
Hang on, one second. So, is the option, do you mean the, the, the alternative is, is for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, right? If, I just want to clarify what your, what is. Paying.
There was an option three-year agreement, alternates for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Okay, and the alternates are that?
The additional.
The emotional work. Okay, just, okay, good. I think that's clear, but let me, let me regurgitate it. So it's, it's the motion as indicated here. And what we're going to so move, Andy, is that this, this three-year, th- this contract would include the option for year three, so we're going to take the first two years, we'll exercise our option for year three, and we have alternate options for each year, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, one clarifying question is, we intend to this year take advantage definitely of the twenty twenty-five alternate, because, Sarah, I think you said that Steve would repurpose and staff to.
He would be to accept the alternate for both years.
Okay.
That's covered, so I'm sure.
There we go, so.
Your contract.
Okay, so, just so you guys know what we're approving, so we're approving two years, which would include the additional, the newly added work for this summer and next summer, and they will exercise both options for either the primary plus alternate for twenty-five, so. Next, move it.
So, move.
Thank you, anybody have a second? Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, I have, uh, motion to award the the mowing program, as discussed, the Autoford Manscaped, in, for a three-year contract, not to the C, but a plan on thousand dollars, one hundred, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars, eighty-eight cents. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, uh, Sarah, is there any additional risks, or does it mean other things? Alright, then, most of the turn.
I have to just, so moved.
Thank, thank you, everyone, for coming, it's been really, really, kind of, it's been.